Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, municipal liberty and just for all.
Please remain standing. Tonight I ask for a moment of silence for First Female Mayor, First Council President Gert Mokotov. May she rest in peace. Thank you. Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean-François.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Problema minutes?
We have no minutes tonight.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, Mayor? Council President, thank you for changing the order of this evening's meeting to address the municipal ID program up front. As you can say, as you can see, the crowd here is very large, flowing out into the halls, and I'm sure we'd like to address that order of business first. So, as you know, the room is packed this evening, and it's been packed many times before because of the Middletown Municipal ID Program. We've had some controversy and many questions. The council has been examining my proposal for several months now. They've reviewed what other communities are doing. We've held several public sessions, receiving input from our residents in all concern. And under your leadership, Council President and Mr. Kleiner, the committee leadership, we're here tonight to vote on this very important issue. So exactly what is the municipal ID card? And who will want one? Who needs one? And there are so many questions over the last few months that I have been asked, and I'm sure you have also, and we've been able to answer those questions, and that brings us to tonight. I have said from the beginning of this program proposal that the municipal ID program has different meanings to different people depending on your personal circumstances. First of all, this program hurts no one. And for us to do this, it doesn't hurt us financially, it doesn't hurt us policy-wise, it hurts no one. So many communities throughout our country have this in place, and they have reaped significant benefits in the area of community-police relationships. For example, Mercer County, New Jersey adopted such a program in 2011 and continues the program today. Their community ID card is being issued with the endorsement of the offices of the Mercer County Sheriff, the Mercer County Prosecutor, and the police departments of several municipalities. That card is a little bit different than ours. It's issued by a nonprofit Latin American Legal Defense Foundation, and is accepted by law enforcement agencies, municipal agencies, clinics, hospitals, libraries, social service agencies, and many stores and banks. Although it is not an official ID card, as ours will not be an official ID card in the sense where people are required to accept it, it facilitates access to community services. That would be the long-term goal of our program. Of course, it will be up to the individual agencies as to whether they would accept the card here in our city, but I would hope that after adoption of this program, and that a focus will be put on by the libraries, for example, to accept it, our city agencies will. To maximize the success of the card and the programs, the programs can be developed to offer discounts, for example, for restaurants, city park rentals, reduction in seasonal passes to our summer programs, and pools, just a few examples. Under Section 325-4, Section C, the security protections of this program include watermarks on the cards or other methods along with barcodes. The success will depend upon the creativity of both the public and private sector. Maybe it will be a benefit to certain businesses that adopt the program to market them, maybe not. Again, that will be their decision, and the program and implementing this program hurts no one. We will also utilize it to identify volunteers on our boards. Currently, some of our board members carry ID cards. I'm sure maybe not all of you are aware of it. So we do have ID cards in Middletown for board members. This is it. It's a little paper card that's filled out by myself and given to certain board members upon request. And so we do have some type of ID program going on now with city officials or appointed members. And for example, we give it to all of our fire police. We would then mandate to all board members and all volunteers in city and city programs carry a picture ID card. And I think that's a reasonable request. Of course, they would not be charged for the card. Again, the card means different things to different people. With the national immigration debate hitting new lows, we must also recognize and acknowledge that this card, and one of the primary purposes of this card, will help undocumented people who are living here now in the city of Middletown. For us, and we've heard it from you yourselves at some of the meetings, and some of the members of the board and other members of the public, the ability to provide proof of identity is something we, as residents of our city and U.S. citizens, take for granted. But it's not only undocumented people who have this difficulty. We have many seniors. If you go to the senior centers, they are facing some of the similar problems. But again, the focus, and I know the media focus and the focus of this room deals with those who are undocumented. We have heard from many in our community that they understand the concerns that were raised by Alderman Massey, and rightly so, so that this tool may be used by immigration officials to locate people who are undocumented. They, the applicants for these cards, they understand that there are risks, but they also can be reassured, and I think we made that very clear at one of the previous meetings, that myself and the city government will utilize the courts to protect this information as much as possible. If you can put yourself in the shoes of one of the folks in this room, and I'm not saying everyone in this room is undocumented, but if you can put yourselves in the shoes of one of them, and think of the courage that it takes to come to a public meeting like this tonight, imagine the fear of them leaving their home, or you leaving your home if you were undocumented, for a gallon of milk, unable to identify yourself to a local police officer if you were a victim of a crime or a witness to a crime. And that's where that local police community relations comes in. A lot of people are witnesses to crimes, and they need to be able to come forward and have confidence that the police department is not acting as an arm of immigration. This protects not only them and their community, but it protects the entire community of which we're hoping, and which they are part of our community. This should concern us, and this alone should justify us doing this municipal ID card. But this inability to provide proof of identity impacts every aspect of their lives 24 hours a day, seven days a week. How can giving some comfort in their lives, some sense of safety in their homes, and remove some semblance of fear from their kids' eyes be bad? That's a question for all of us, including the residents in our community. So I have talked to you about what this program is. Here's what it's not. It makes no reference to one's immigration status. We will get a sense of where the nation is on this issue tomorrow, but as that debate continues throughout the next few years, let's do what we can do here in Middletown and stand out as a community that is welcoming. Number two, you must be a city resident to receive one, and certain types of ID must be presented to be approved. So it's not someone walking in the door demanding a municipal ID from city officials. They can only be used for the purpose of identity at this point. You cannot drive, you cannot use to fly an airline. It doesn't authorize you to work. It cannot be used to get a driver's license. Those were some of the questions that were asked by people who opposed it. It cannot be used to register to vote and doesn't change your immigration status. If you commit a crime and you have a municipal ID card, you will be prosecuted, just like if we commit a crime and we're residents of the city and legal residents of the United States, we will be prosecuted. Nothing changes in that regard. I want to ensure the public on both sides of this issue that I and all members of the common council have listened intently over the past number of months about your concerns on both sides of the issue. Like the national debate, there have been many comments about this program that are just not true, and I hope that I've clarified some of them for you. Many residents have legitimate concerns and questions, and I hope we have addressed them also, including the points that I made I referenced above. I need to share a conversation that I had with a guy I grew up with in Middletown a few years ago. A few months ago, I mean, sorry. I've known him my entire life, and he had concerns, and some of them mirrored the national debate about immigration. We were on opposite sides of the national discussion, and the conversation was going nowhere, as most conversations heat up in this climate, political climate, but at least we were having a discussion. I then reminded him of something that was always stuck in the back of my mind growing up with him, and over the years, he always told me about his mother. Now in her 90s, a graduate of Middletown High School, proud of her Italian ancestry, and she refused to attend any of her high school reunions. Keep in mind, she's in her 90s now. She was a successful professional here in Middletown. She raised a beautiful family. She had four kids, many nieces and nephews, growing up in a ethnic neighborhood, of which myself and Mr. Massey grew up in, the first ward in the city of Middletown, and a lifelong resident, and she loves Middletown. As the argument continued, I asked him, "Do you remember why your mother didn't attend any of those high school reunions? Do you recall any of the conversations that you shared with us?" And he did. He remembered. Throughout school as a child of a poor immigrant family, living in an immigrant neighborhood, the first ward, the pain caused by the mistreatment of others left a scar on her for her entire life. She is now, as I said, in her 90s and has not attended one high school reunion because of that mistreatment and felt that people were looking down on her. She didn't feel part of the community as a kid. We have an opportunity to change the story of many people and many children in our city. When they look back at tonight's vote, they will know that the elected representatives in the city of Middletown, and what I believe to be the overwhelming majority of residents in our city, cared enough about them to recognize them as people, as members of our community, and that they are welcome here in the city of Middletown. Tonight's vote will demonstrate who and what we are as elected officials representing the city of Middletown. Thank you for your time, and I hope we have a unanimous vote this evening. I'll open up to the public for a quick, two-minute speech so we can get on to a new resolution.
I'm gonna give a quick, two-minute speech. Thank you, all of you, for putting this and, you know, an important issue for the city of Middletown. Thank you, Mayor, for your words. Like I say, I repeat this every time, like, two years ago, it started like with a vision and with a dream, because I had a lot of fear in me. I mean, this is gonna help us to relieve a little bit of the fear that we always have, because the community needs it, especially in these times. We feel unprotected. We feel chased. We feel like we don't belong anywhere. So by giving us this, you give us a hope that things can change, that there is people out there that are understanding our needs, and that are willing to work with us to do a better life for us. So thank you for that.
Hello, good evening. My name is Vanessa. I am the program associate here with Nobody Leaves Manhattan, but I was also born and raised here in Middletown. And I know that I can say on behalf of the organization that it has been a pleasure working with all of you on creating this legislation, and it is actually very exciting to know that this actually is one of the first, I'm sorry, one of the three cities to do it here in New York State and one of 25 in the country. So it's been really great to work with you guys, as well as along with Kingston and Poughkeepsie, who just had it passed. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerome. I'm working, I'm a member of the organization Nobody Leaves Manhattan. Well, I think there is no doubt that the risks that you talk about, the last millions are not here. You see these people already here. There are also people on the stairs, like, it's just amazing. And I just wanna say thank you for this. Thanks for your support. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Mr. Towen. Mr. Massey. President Rodriguez. Thank you, Mr. John. Burr from Jean-François. Kleiner and Graham Cassoun. Thanks so much. And, well, probably next year, you'll see us here for asking for driver licenses. Thanks so much.
New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to approve the municipal identification card program for the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussions? Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I will be brief, but I do wanna thank the mayor, who's been saying for a year and a half now, just get this done. We found it wasn't quite that easy, but we think that this is the resolution. We've been over it many times. We've had a lot of input, and we think that the privacy protections built in are excellent, and we're going to do the best we can to protect everyone who's willing to and step forward and be part of this program. We hope the community will adopt it. We hope that everyone will get on board. My, and we don't even say it in the resolution, but my biggest hope for this end is that what a help it will be in promoting public safety. And I wanna thank the police chief and the police department. They have been on board on this from the very beginning, from our first discussions. So it's not a magic answer to all the problems, but it's a help. It's a start. I wanna thank Angel Gonzalez for softening a few hearts when he spoke here about how he just wants everyone to be nice to everyone else. And I thank all of you for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
I'm happy to say aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
We're gonna take a short break. Remarks to department heads, economic development.
Good evening. As they say, a picture is worth a thousand words, Mr. Massey. So on Friday, Middletown received its Christmas tree, and I got a short, very short and brief PowerPoint to thank everybody and show you how the morning went. This is the City of Middletown Business Improvement District project. This is our 21st tree lighting ceremony that's coming up. As you can see, the proud family, the Foglias, out on Turflore Terrace, donated the tree. Kim, Justin, and Baby Ethan, they were all proud that their tree was coming to Middletown and to be placed at Festival Square. Baby Ethan's looking forward to Santa, so he's all excited. I wanna shout out to Mark Pengel and DPW. Thank you, Jacob. They did tremendous work. They teamed up with the Parks Department, and it was about a good 35-foot tree that was on the property, and as you can see, they were maneuvering it off the grounds on the property and putting it on the flatbed there. And then made its way to Festival Square, and then the team all worked together getting it placed in the center. That's the finished product. It's gonna be decorated on November 17th. And the sponsors, obviously, the Foglia family. Again, many thanks to them. Aspen Landscaping and Tree Service for their dedication, dedicating the cutting of the tree. Regional Trucking for transporting. Harry Rottoland Son and the International Brotherhood of Electric Workers will be the ones donating their services to decorate the tree. And then, of course, special thanks to the police department, chief, your department, along with the town of Walkill, made it a safe ride into town, and thank you for that. And of course, the Parks Department and Public Works. And then, November 23rd, starting at 6:00 p.m., the master there, Santa, will be back in downtown Middletown and light the tree, and we look forward to everybody attending. That's it. That's all I have for this evening.
Any questions, Maria? Thank you. Nice presentation. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening. I'll be very brief tonight. Just remind the public that the city of Middletown now owns the LED lights and the streetlights. So if you see any lights that is out, or any light that is out, please give us a call with the phone number or just the address to DPW 3433169. Today, we finished paving Wickham Avenue from City Line up to Beatty, and that concludes our paving program. It was a nasty day, but the guys did a good job, and I appreciate all the help they did today in such a nasty environment. You have any questions for me?
Thank you, Jacob. Police Chief?
You almost got me. Good evening. Just two quick items for you this evening. First, I'd like to recognize and thank the bid district. They recently purchased the police department a new electric assist bicycle. We ordered it from the Bicycle Doctor here in downtown, and it's gonna take a few months, and we'll have that in service this coming spring of 2019. So once again, thank you to the bid district. We greatly appreciate that. The second item is, this Thursday will be Sergeant Neil Castles, the last day with the Middletown Police after a 20-year successful career. He earned the rank of sergeant. He's moving on for personal reasons. He's reached the pinnacle in his career and wants to spend more time with his family. So I just wanted to publicly recognize him, and we'll be doing a walkout for him Thursday afternoon at 3:45, if anybody would like to join us. Other than that, any questions for me?
Any questions for the police chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. John?
Just a reminder, tomorrow is Election Day. All the polls in the city of Middletown will be open at 6:00 a.m. and close at 9:00. If anybody needs to know where they need to vote, they can call our office at 346-4166. It's according to your ward and what district that you're in. So if anybody has any questions on that, they can call our office. We'll be open from 8:30 to 4:30 tomorrow. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, going back to the Goodwood City, if anyone has any, anything they would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, Mr. President, Your Honored the Mayor, members of the common council. I'm happy to be back here as a liaison from the Middletown School District. On October 18th, our school board voted to approve a referendum that will be held December 4th for major capital improvements that will total an estimated $34,880,000. So let me give you the breakdown. What are those capital improvements? The referendum proposed a spending about $9,340,000 for Maple Hill Elementary School roof replacement, $8,080,000 for Monhegan Middle School roof replacement, and as well as $3,150,000 for Twin Towers Middle School Masonry Restoration, $670,000 for roofing and flashing repairs at Twin Towers, and also it will include building a major state-of-the-art library combined cafeteria for a high school, where right now, for a long time, we had a shortage of seats available, and we've had kids eating lunch sometimes a little too early in the morning. That will improve. We'll have a Starbucks-style cafeteria, library merged. Now, where will the money come from, right? The $34,880,000 will come from the unappropriated fund balance of $5,680,000. About $10 million will be taken from the Capital Reserve Fund and the voters for the creation of which the Middletown voters approved back in May of 2017. And there's $2,002 million allocated for library renovation between the, within the 2018-2019 budget. In other words, there's not gonna be a single tax, a single penny raise in taxes to fund this. To quote one of my personally favorite former presidents, no new taxes, but this time we'll be able to keep the word as a commitment to our voters. So our school districts are moving forward to provide structures, infrastructure that's safe and sound, and that will encourage academic excellence, trademark for our school district. We've also consolidated the polling sites for school board-related elections in that there will not be a poll site at Twin Towers. As you know, Twin Towers is not that far from the high school, which is the mayor poll site, and Twin Towers have had a lower vote-turning rate. So we hope that we will, this will be able to save taxpayer money, at the same time, continue to have our other poll sites, given that we are a very large district that extends from the hills of Crawford all the way to the horizons of the new Legoland and Goshen. So we should be able to do that. As Chair of the Fair Funding Committee, I'm happy to report that we are expanding our committee to community members. The Honorable Jeff Berkman will be joining, or has joined our committee. Mr. Berkman brings over two decades of public service, and I look forward to his expertise in working together to address the challenges of unfunded mandates, and as well as the money that we are owed pursuant to the lawsuit that's been filed on behalf of small school districts, where ours, for example, every year is short-changed by the state of New York. Hopefully, we could get things done. We'll keep up the good fight. And finally, in recognition of our students, our high school, ROTC, along with the Elementary School Honor Society from Presidential Park, and I believe it was William Carter, participated in serving food again at the Elks Pancake Breakfast, which I know many of our distinguished members here were present. And again, we continue our example, our support for these organizations, which highlight academic achievement and teach wonderful values of patriotism and pride and serve in the community. And finally, as we all know, this Tuesday marks Election Day, celebration of freedom. After many months of spirited campaigns by Americans of all political stripes, we're going out to the polls to exercise a right that many in the world still not know, and for which many lives throughout the ages have been sacrificed. And I, of course, as a parent myself, encourage other parents to bring your children to the polls, teach them of this most precious freedom, where we as a people respectfully, of diverse views or paralloyalties, come together to make up those words in the Constitution, "We the people." That's all for today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lasat, and I know many of you know me from the local art gallery on 21 North Street. I'm actually here on behalf of Jen Matsker, who wanted to apologize for not making this day, which is very monumental for so many. And she sent me a little blurb to, on her behalf, in her own words. She wanted to thank, she wanted to say that in this time of increasing divisiveness in our country, she commends Mayor Dastefano and the Middletown Common Council for standing up for our democratic values of inclusiveness and respect for the dignity of all people, and for taking this important step to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to participate fully in our society and contribute productively to our community and economy. So we all thank you. Thank you so much. This is, I hope this is like a trend. And I was saying in Spanish, I'm not sure if there's any one that, if it's okay if I can translate. Okay, oh, okay, good. Okay, oh, okay, good. Quería decir en español para traducir que, no, yo, la cantidad que, de Jen Matsker quería decir que está agradecida al municipal, al alcalde, al, a la cons, a los consejos, que ayudaron a hacer esto posible, que creyeron en nosotros. Y agradezco a todos que juntos unidos como latinos y la lucha hemos podido tener esa compasión para que ellos vean que estamos juntos en esta lucha. Y agradezco que todos están aquí también. So, muchas gracias y que tengan una buena noche.
Thank you. Mayor, anything else?
We had the, um, public hearing for the budget, um, at six o'clock this evening. Uh, we had one person from the public attend, um, did not comment, but, uh, did attend. Um, and it was also televised, um, so I just want to give you a, um, some of the budget highlights. We are staying within the property tax cap once again. We are under the two percent tax cap, and this, um, is, every year since the Governor Cuomo put the tax cap into effect, uh, the city of Middletown has met, uh, the, we have been under the tax cap, um, as allowed by state law. Everyone understands that if we exceed the tax cap, we have to go through a separate vote with a supermajority passing, but also, um, you, the taxpayers lose your rebate check that you get each year from the, uh, from the state for us passing the, our staying within the cap. So this year's budget, um, operations has, apps, has dropped total operations, um, about three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, special items has gone up slightly, uh, personal services. Um, on the outline, you'll see there's a significant bump in personal services because we are anticipating resolving this CSEA contract, and that will have about three, four years, uh, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and two thousand eighteen, um, uh, increases included in that. So you'll see a spike there. Employee benefits actually went down slightly, uh, debt service up slightly. Uh, pension services, uh, almost an eight percent increase. Workman's Comp, four and three-quarter percent increase. Health insurance, sixteen point seven eight increase, not oral rate. Um, some of it is additional employees because of the, um, increase in, um, SROs, of which we're receiving money back from the school district. But we did offer, um, we did add, I believe, about five or seven police officers and some other staff. Uh, payroll taxes are up slightly, but overall, the, um, the property tax rate per thousand will be going up about one point three three percent. Um, and the water and sewer rates are going up under the cap of two percent. And that is just the general overview of the budget. If the public has any questions, I believe we're voting on it on November twentieth. Um, we will accept public comment and review up until that point. Um, the rules of the, of the city or the Common Council can reduce spending, but they cannot increase spending once presented with the budget from the Board of Estimate. And I think that's all I have. I want to thank you all for your positive vote on municipal IDs. I think it was the right thing to do, and if you have any questions to me, I'd be more than willing to address it at this point. Mr. Kleiner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think, since we had the three weeks, I think since last time, you've reached the agreement on the water-taking for AMES. And I think also the Heritage Trail. I don't think people know either one of those.
Yes, the AMES, we did receive our water-taking permit. With everything going on, I forgot all about it.
Yeah.
Um, myself and Mr. Twiel did go to the DEC about a week ago on Friday, or this past Friday, I think it was. Um, and, um, after a lengthy meeting, um, we did commit to a few, uh, projects that will have to be done further down the line. We agreed to move them up, such as, uh, monitoring or, uh, or, what do you call those valves, not valves, flow, flow meters. Um, and, uh, but we did get the water-taking permit. AMES is moving forward. The trail is signed and sealed. We're waiting for the county to put out the, um, um, the bid. We're told that it will begin construction in early two thousand nineteen. We also have a meeting coming up with the Parks Department of the county, Mr. Brooks, who's been very active since taking over, about completing the design from East Main Street through downtown and out, um, you know, at the other end of West Main Street. And the Coach USA portion is also anticipated to begin, um, in spring of two thousand nineteen, along with all of our capital projects, which we'll be giving you a briefing on, um, at the State of the City, hopefully in early January. So, uh, uh, there, there are a lot of projects happening all at once. Two thousand nineteen is going to be a very busy time for the city of Middletown. I don't know if Maria touched on it, um, but we did receive four bids on the facade program. So they're being reviewed now. As you know, that was a rebid from earlier when we only received one bid. But, uh, we did receive four bidders, uh, bids from four different people, and, uh, that project should be moving very shortly also.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor. Marshall Oldman. Aldman Burr.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank the mayor and the Finance Department for, and Finance Chairman, Mr. Massey, for coming with another budget under two percent. Our constituents really do appreciate their checks. Plus, this year it was a little higher check than normal. And, uh, congratulations to the municipal ID, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson Swa.
Yes, uh, good evening. Congratulations to all on the municipal ID. This is, uh, a huge first steps, uh, to obtain a proper identification for most of you. Sitting here for the last, uh, couple of months, uh, to just listen to some of you guys, some of the struggles that you guys go to that us sitting here, that we actually take for granted, far as, uh, picking up your, uh, your student, your kids in school, far as getting a book at the library, even to start a, uh, uh, a, a, a bank card, it's, it's, it's a struggle. So I'm happy to sit here to be part of this program to actually help you guys make your life a lot easier. And I also like to thank, uh, my partner, Aldman Kleiner, for his doing his due diligence in this whole process for bringing this to the table. And also, John, I know this is going to be a huge undertaking for your department. Anything I could do to help, feel free. Thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. Thank you, Aldman and John Francois. Um, that's a reminder of the thing that we did not say was the, uh, effective date on the ID card program is February first, and that's because there are a lot of things that have to be put in place. We'll hope to have it sooner, but we, uh, a lot of the hard work begins right now, so, um, we'll be working with John and other people in the city and moving that forward. Remind people to vote. When you look at what's going on in the country right now in terms of voter suppression, it's, it's really disgusting. A lot of it, you think back to Jim Crow days, and you do everything you can to keep minority people from voting, and, uh, the, the courts are slow to intervene, and you know, the Supreme Court in two thousand thirteen invalidated Section Four of the Voting Rights Act. So they took away the remedy for it, even though that in two thousand six, Congress had renewed it for twenty-five years, so, uh, that's where the Supreme Court makes a difference. That was a five-four decision of the Roberts Court, and, and we need to understand what's going on, so vote like the planet depended on it, because it does. I want to remind everybody, too, that next Sunday, I'm sure Mr. Massey will touch on this, but next Sunday is Veterans Day, but I bring it up from the Historical Society because it is one hundred years since the original Armistice Day. So it's, um, it's, it's quite a significant time, so please go out and, uh, support the veterans. That's at the Elks Club. Joe, you'll expand on that. Trunk or Treat was unbelievable. Uh, I want to thank Chris, Nicole, particularly, uh, in the Rec Department, and anyone involved in putting that on, the YMCA. It was mobbed, so it was in a really nasty rainy day. It's amazing how many people came out. It was just, it was just a wonderful event, so thank you all. And we're reminded that we're in November, and on November eighteenth, the Warming Station will be opening its doors again. Thank you, Andrew. Andrew has updated the website. It's MiddletownWarmingStation.com. And if you go to it, you will find places where you can volunteer, you can sign up, you can get the information on what it's about. Um, it's, it's, uh, again, thank St. Paul's Church and the Interfaith Council, who have, who really, um, do an amazing job. It's, it's, um, there's a training this Thursday at seven P.M., and then the following Thursday, the fifteenth, at seven P.M. If you want to volunteer, the training's held at the Warming Station downstairs at St. Paul's Church, so, um, it's, it's a very good thing for the community, so thank everyone involved with that. Thank you.
Aldman Racozoo?
Good evening. Um, I'd just like to congratulate you all tonight. You can't help but smile looking out at this room and seeing you guys out tonight, and you're an important part of our community. We, I moved to this town thirteen, twelve years ago. I can't even keep count anymore. It's been a long time. But, you know, we chose this community because it's, it felt like a very big, diverse family, and that's evident in every time we get together at our functions, when the city comes out. That's how we get along. That's how we interact. And it's just nice that you now feel more a part of that family. So welcome, and my congratulations, and my heartfelt thanks to you for putting in the work and being here and being heard, and congratulations tonight. I think it was a great night for all of us. Tomorrow, vote, 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 vote. Please vote. Um, the, I think the, the reason why we find ourselves in the situation we're in today is because so many people just think that their vote doesn't matter, or it's not, it doesn't carry weight, and it does, and it's been proven out time and again, so please vote. It's becoming more and more important every day, so if you are able, go out. If you are not, get a ballot in advance. Thank you. Have a great and safe night.
Aldman Johnson?
Thank you very much. I want to compliment the mayor. I think in three or four minutes, he touched on all the issues that we've been debating for the last year or two. And I also want to, uh, reflect on Aldman Kleiner's remarks with respect to voter suppression. Maybe it's not a coincidence that we voted tonight on ID cards in the city of Middletown. And when you look at Kansas, which targeted the Latin American community and said, "We're going to put the voting place where you can possibly get to," and we changed the rules late enough that the judge said, "It's too close to the election to intervene." And then who's the other targeted group in voter suppression? The American Indian community in North Dakota. And they have ID cards, but they changed the rule and said, "Your ID card has to have your street address on it," knowing full well that apparently on the land occupied by tribes, there are no street names. And I listened over the weekend to agencies trying to, to create forty thousand ID cards and create addresses so that these people can vote. Um, it's really, it's sad to believe that that's the country in which we live, and that's the way people feel they need to be successful, is by denying people the right to have an opinion. So cheers to us for the ID card. However, Aldman Jean Francois talked about the fact of going to schools, and we talked about this in committee, that this would be a way that you would be able to pick up your child during the school hours. And as one of the two liaisons of the school board, I discussed this with Superintendent Del Maro. And at the last meeting, I said, "You know, we're going to vote on the fifth, and if we could get that in writing," because that's my thing, get it in writing, "that would be really great." Well, the next day, uh, he said, "We're not really sure that we can validate that." And so what did I learn about that? I learned that one of the reasons that they ask for a driver's license ID to go to school is they cross-reference that with the sex offenders list. And education apparently takes that very seriously. Superintendent Del Maro told me a story that he was going to a school function, a county school function, as a superintendent of schools, entering another, another building in another district. He left his wallet in the car, and he told me I could tell this story. He left his wallet in his car, in which it was included his driver's license. He went to enter the building as the superintendent of schools for Middletown for a scheduled meeting, and the person at the desk said, "You need your driver's license to enter the building." He had his badge on with his photo for Middletown School District. He said, "Well, um, uh, Mr. Del Maro, I have the badge." Person said, "You need to have your driver's license if you want to enter the building." And he had to go back and get his driver's license. So it was explained to me that they will accept state and federal IDs because those are cross-referenced, and that at this time, it is not really clear that they would accept a municipal ID to pick up your child during the regular school day. And that's one of the reasons for that. In fact, they're trying to put, um, their own cameras in place where they could scan that at the building site as you enter the building. So it's not a no, but it's, uh, it's something that's being considered by council, and at this time, they would not be willing to commit to using our municipal card for that particular purpose. It's not a deal breaker. It's just a clarification as to how we can move forward, and thank you for your kind attention.
Aldman Green?
Thank you. Um, I just want to thank everyone for turning out tonight. Um, you know, you wouldn't see this turnout just for some budget transfers. Um, so it's really, uh, you know, a great thing. Um, one thing we can take out of all this, or that I've taken out of all this personally, is that when Middletown is passionate about something, Middletown turns out for it. And, you know, now I believe that we've given everyone a little more comfort so that they can turn out to more, you know? We've seen the, the turnout at anti-hate rallies, the anti, you know, violence rallies that we've had. Uh, just this past week, we had a turnout of community and faith leaders at Temple Sinai, uh, that I'd like to thank the rabbi for hosting, uh, in support, uh, you know, for the, the Pittsburgh shooting. It's just, it's, it's really a positive thing, and we can't get enough. The term "community" gets thrown around quite a bit. But, uh, you know, at the end of the day, we do have each other, and Middletown's one of those cities that's always been a very strong community, and, and I think this just reinforced that. Um, so again, tomorrow, Middletown needs to turn out and vote. So I think we, you know, everyone's said that, but it's another time where we really need to turn out, so let's do it again and vote. Everyone have a, a great night. Thank you.
Aldman Tobin?
Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for the support, for the, the resolution tonight. I mean, I got into public service wanting to help people, and so I think when you, when we can make a difference in people's lives in a positive way, whether they feel safer in the community, you know, it's a good thing. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Aldman Kleiner, the mayor, everybody. If I start thanking people, I'll probably forget someone, but everybody who was involved. I know even the community, everybody got involved, former Alderman Sid, that, uh, you know, this was a best, definitely a group effort to get this thing going, and, uh, I'm very proud of it. I also like to echo the remarks of Aldman Burr. Uh, you know, thanks for creating a budget under the tax cap, uh, year after year. Uh, the residents do definitely approve. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Aldman Massey?
Yes, uh, Mr. Gomez, I'm glad you're still here. I would encourage that at some point in the near future, you start the process of getting back on Channel Twenty with the school. Buy the equipment, whatever it has to be, so that people will be able to watch the, uh, meetings and hear everything that you have to say. Jerry, I want to thank you for pushing so hard, you along with the mayor, with the ID program. I'm happy for it. I'm happy for everyone. Thank you all for showing up tonight. The Elks Club on Sunday, the eleventh, at eleven o'clock, they have a service. And as a, a veteran, uh, I'd appreciate anyone or welcome anyone that wants to come up to their service. Uh, they have it every year, and it, it's a nice time. It takes about an hour out of the day, and they have refreshments afterwards. And finally, like everyone else said, uh, tomorrow is an important day. We've got to start changing the culture. We have to start changing the feelings out there. We just have to start being inclusive and accepting everyone. And it begins with going out there and voting, so I hope everyone could, gets an opportunity to vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Do business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to amend the standard workdays for employees that will report days' work to the New York State and local employees retirement system based on the time consent system or the record of activities.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Broke.
Ram Crisoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to reestablish standard workdays for one elected and one appointed official based on their record of activities.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Emily Green Pacella to the Board of Assessment Review, term five years to expire September 30th, 2023.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $33,000 within the Fire Department's 2018 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve two proposals from CT Mail Associates for engineering design services for the Shawangook Reservoir and proposal for engineering design services for the Middletown Reservoir Dam rehabilitation of Kinch Dam.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve two proposals from CT Mail Associates for engineering design services for the Shawangook Reservoir and proposal for engineering design services for the Middletown Reservoir Dam rehabilitation of Kinch Dam.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, certifications, and submissions regarding the 2019 CDGB action plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $6,817.60 within the 2018 budget due to additional testing performed for the water, wastewater treatment plant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?[1685.83]